Good evening, everyone. And thank you for your patience. We're now out of executive summary and we will move forward with our meeting, which will start with our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the—oh, my bad. Everybody, right? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, and who led our pledge?
Dorlan Ajali. He is one of our board interns. He goes to school at Charles Drew High School.
Thank you again. We appreciate it. All right. Okay, so we're going to begin our recognitions. We do have a few this evening, as you can tell from the audience, coming in the door at this time, and they'll be coming right up to meet the board. We also—we would like to ask Dr. Keith Colbert, Dr. Tim Guiney, Dr. Eldrick Horton, Dr. Prince Bowie, Mr. Gary Townsend, if he is able to be here tonight, and Ms. Brenda Ross Wilson to please come forward and join the board. And as I begin reading this information, I'm going to ask the team to begin their procession across the front to meet the board. Clayton County Public Schools is proud to announce that this—that during— earlier this year, the Stillwell Stallions Dance Team won their fourth consecutive Georgia High School Association Dance Competition State Championship. The team earned its fifth state title championship with a perfect blend of precision, artistry, and athleticism. They are Camille Elie, Chelsea Adams, Summer Worthy, Justice Dickerson, Amara Lewis, Amira Leon, Ty Emerson, Kamarti Moses, Natalia Ingram, Jaden Green, Kamara Costin, Tera Lawrence, Raven Brooks, Yolana Jackson, and the coach of the team, Brianna Smart. Congratulations. Wait, wait, they're still talking. Okay. Now, before you guys move, I'd like to bring Brianna Smart down front and center in front of her team. Clayton County Public Schools congratulates Ms. Brianna Smart, Dance Instructor at ME Stillwell School of the Arts, on being named HBCU National Auxiliary and Dance Directors Association Coach of the Year. This prestigious honor highlights her exceptional leadership, choreography, and commitment to shaping young dancers, both on and off the stage. In addition to this national recognition, she led her team, as we stated before, to state championship victory this year, which solidified—solidified, rather, her reputation as a top-tier coach and mentor. Congratulations. Oh, we gotta do another set of pictures. Thank you. Our next group to come forward is a team that finished second in the state in their particular endeavor. I would ask Dr. Delphia Young, Dr. April Crawford, Dr. Keith Colbert, Dr. Tim Guiney, Dr. Eldrick Horton, Mr. Lonnie Farmer, and Ms. Felicia Brown, if they are present, to join the board up front. And they're going to be walking across as I share this information. The Clayton County Eagles Adaptive Sports Wheelchair Basketball Team— They took their game to the biggest stage in Georgia, the Georgia High School Association State Finals in Wheelchair Basketball that was played at the Macon Coliseum. Although they played with great heart, the Eagles were unable to overcome the defending state champion Houston County team, finishing, however, as the number-two team in the state. The performers are— Congratulations are extended to DeMarcus Allen Jr., Kylo Ray Brown, Xavier Bullock, Andrew Dotson, Jacavian Marks, Michael Martins, Darren Matlock, and Kwan Smith, and Gary Woodruff, along with interim coach Samuel Titus Gonzalez, and other coaches and supporters, Deontre Smith, Taiwon Yormay, Edward Roan, Dr. Sheila Cook, Dwight Smalls, Trina Smith, and Mr. Shiflett, Gary Townsend, Mark Christmas, and, if we could, representative from Safety and Security Department and Representative for Transportation. Both of those entities are very much appreciated for their support of this outstanding team. Congratulations. You gotta get a photo. Thank you. For our next recognition, we asked Dr. Delphia Young to remain up front, along with Dr. Keith Colbert, Dr. Tim Guiney, Dr. Eldrick Horton, and Mr. Sam West, or a representative of the Elite Scholars Academy. And coming forward is another team that shows excellence in the—in the country. Clayton County Public Schools congratulates Elite Scholars Academy's Academic Decathlon Team. After four consecutive state championships, the team finished a close runner-up overall and runner-up in Division One at the Page Academic Decathlon State Competition earlier this year. It should be noted that the divisions were realigned this year by qualifying scores rather than school population. So this is the first year that this team has competed in Division One, and as stated, they finished a strong runner-up. It should also be noted that Elite Scholars students won 28 total individual medals and qualified to represent Georgia for the fifth consecutive year at the national finals in Des Moines, Iowa, in May. The performers on the team are Han Tron, Tony Doan, Tracy Nguyen, Ethan Ortiz, Crystal Zarate Hernandez, Landon Wood, Lauren Palmer, Jacob Isenone, Anthony Reyes Gonzalez, Haydn Stur, David Chang, and the coach-adviser of the team is C. Jack Smith. And everyone with the exception of Dr. Horton can have a seat, because we up front—they need to stay up front. And I think—I—because we do need you there, Dr. Guiney, so don't step away. So Dr. Young, Dr. Colbert, Dr. Guiney, also Dr. Charmin Johnson, Mr. Lonnie Farmer, Dr. Cassandra Hopkins, Ms. Ebony Brown, Ms. Regina Willingham. We also would like for Sam West, Dr. Lee Buddy, Malika Wright, and Michael Thompson, if they would to please join the board up front. Y'all might want to shuffle down a little bit. Clayton County Public Schools hosted the 2025 District Spelling Bee earlier this year. Scholars from across the district, ranging from third through eighth grade, gathered to participate in this prestigious event, continuing a longstanding tradition that honors literacy and education. The top five finishers in that spelling bee, finishing in fifth place, are as the alternate Julian Barnett of Tara Elementary School. Please come forward when I call your name and remain up front. Next up, in fourth place, Marvellous Ukuti, Point South Middle School. Please come forward. In third place, Liliana Cortez from MD Roberts Middle School of the Arts. In the second place, Cash Haynes, Pace Elementary School of the Arts. And the first-place champion from Elite Scholars Academy Middle School, Uwari Oley, from Elite Scholars Academy. Please come forward. So we're going to ask the principals to come in toward the middle as well, to be with their students. By the way, the top four finishers advance to regional competition. So we congratulate them on that accomplishment. Shuffle this way. For the next— For the next individuals that we're recognizing, we have Dr. Delphia Young, Dr. Keith Colbert, Dr. Tim Guiney, Dr. Eldrick Horton, and Ms. Brenda Ross Wilson. Would Giovanni Jackson please come forward? Showcasing her incredible talent and dedication, Stillwell School of the Arts Senior Vocalist Giovanni Jackson was crowned as the state champion in a female solo at the Georgia High School Association Literary Championships. We also congratulate Ms. Jackson on being selected as a finalist for the 2025 Georgia Music Educators Association All-State Reading Chorus. Congratulations. Congratulations. With Dr. Delphia Young, Dr. Colbert, Dr. Guiney, Mr. Farmer, Mr. Craig Coleman, Ms. Brenda—whoa, that's wrong. Mr. Carter Young and Ms. Trona Peoples, the 2024 Media Specialist of the Year for the district, please come forward. Come on down. Get in the middle. And we ask that Ms. Laura Woods—Laura Woods, please—you're already there. You jumped the gun, that's good. That shows—that's why you won. And there's a lot of people here in support of this lovely lady. Would you guys please stand? Talk about a village raising a child. There's also a village supports a very strong educator. 2025 Clayton County Public School Media Specialist of the Year is Laura Woods, Media Specialist at Mondays Mill Middle School. Her nominator is—and described Ms. Woods as "a game changer who blends new library media strategies with tried-and-true methods. A creative and strategic thinker and a natural collaborator, Ms. Woods ensures that students see themselves in the books that she selects for the collection. Ms. Woods carries out her responsibilities with warm enthusiasm and compassion for both her students and faculty members." In addition to an award being presented by Mr. Coleman, Ms. Peoples presents her with a special recognition as well for being named the Media Specialist of the Year for Clayton County Public Schools. Thank you. So with Dr. Keith Colbert, Dr. Tim Guiney, Dr. Charmin Johnson, Dr. Eldrick Horton, Mr. Lonnie Farmer, Dr. Cassandra Hopkins, Ms. Trina Reeves, and Dr. Delphia Young, please join the board up front. Would the following principals please come forward, representing Tara Elementary School, Forest Park Middle School, Forest Park High School, Morrow High School, Mondays Mill High School. And if you have some leadership, members of your leadership team, have them come forward as well. As everyone is coming forward, it is our privilege to recognize these schools for earning the prestigious Cognia STEM Certification. The Cognia STEM Certification is recognition of a school's commitment to excellence and STEM education. This certification recognizes that these five schools provide their students with a robust and comprehensive STEM curriculum that prepares their students for the challenges and opportunities of the future. The Cognia STEM Certification is awarded to schools that demonstrate adherence to the high standards in STEM education through innovative teaching, approaches, collaboration, and active learning environments. There are now 14 Cognia STEM schools in our district. Shuffle. We have two more recognitions to do tonight. We would ask Dr. Douglas Hendricks, Dr. Keith Colbert, Dr. April Crawford, Ms. Felicia Brown, Ms. Trina Smith, and any members of the Department of Exceptional Students staff, please come forward and join the board. Tonight— Tonight, the board joins with the district to observe and celebrate Exceptional Children's Week, which is April the 14th through April 18th. This eventful week connects school and community to demonstrate a focus on student abilities and honors our exceptional people and services that they render. This year's theme for Exceptional Children's Week is Bridging Gaps, Building Futures. Board members have tonight received a commemorative pen, as have members of the cabinet. That pen was designed by an exceptional student in our district and embodies the meaning of this year's theme. We will formally recognize this artist during our May 5th meeting at the Performing Arts Center. So congratulations on this very special week. Our final recognition—and for our final recognition, I would ask Dr. Hendricks to remain up front, along with Dr. Smith, and that—you can stay if you'd like. Okay. Clayton County Public Schools takes great pride in saluting the Clayton County Board of Education and observance of Georgia School Board Appreciation Week during the month of March. This was supposed to have happened on March 31st, but of course, we did not have the workset. session. So we're doing it tonight. Board Appreciation Week is a statewide celebration sponsored by the Georgia School Boards Association that calls attention to the contributions of our board and its nine members. At this time, Clayton County Public Schools expresses the appreciation to our Board of Education members for their dedication and their service. As each comes forward, they will be presented with an award of appreciation from CCPS Superintendent and CEO of Schools, Dr. Anthony W. Smith. We will begin with our board chair, Mr. Benjamin Straker, representing District 9, having served for 10 years. Our next honoree is Ms. Mary Baker, Board Vice Chair, representing District 6 with 17 years of service. Our next honoree is Ms. Jasmine Bowles, representing District 1 with seven years of service. Our next honoree is Mr. Mark Christmas, representing District 2 with 13 years of service. Our next honoree is Ms. Jessie Goree, representing District 3 with 17 years of service. That's up to the superintendent. I'm sure he's going to do that. So yeah, there you go. Ms. Victoria Williams is next, representing District 4 with seven years of service. Our next representative to receive honors is Dr. Beatrice D. Haney, representing District 5 with five years of service. Next to be honored is Ms. Sabrina Hill, representing District 7 with four years of service. And our final board member to be recognized tonight, Ms. Joy Tellis Cooper, representing District 8 with three years of service. I now turn the microphone over to Dr. Smith in case he has something that he would like to share. Okay, don't go away, don't go away, stay, 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 stay.
And we also want to get a picture of just the board.
Oh yes, thank you so much, Mr. White. The board deserves more than just their congratulations. They do some incredible work. We are really moving in a great direction with our academics, with our attendance, with our discipline, with our facilities, with our athletics, so many things are happening in Clayton County, and it has everything to do with the support of the board. And I feel like the community really values this board because for the first time, all five members that was up for reelection went unopposed, which is absolutely a signal to me from the community that they support the work that this great board is doing. So from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank this board for allowing for me to have the opportunity to serve in the role of superintendent and for your great, great support. Thank you so very much.
And now a photograph of just the board members, please. And Ms. Joy Tellis Cooper now is going to draw the ticket or the name of the individuals being honored, and so I'm going to give that to.
All right, good evening again, everyone. Good evening. This is the time of the board meeting where our awesome employees are recognized and noticed for their hard work. So Ms. Tellis Cooper, will you do us the honors of drawing the name tonight? We have been paying mortgages and car notes all year long, and we are ready to pay another mortgage. Did you say Billy Rice? Oh, Tillman, oh, Rice. Billy Tillman, Jr., North Clayton Middle School, for his hard work and dedication going above and beyond to ensure that scholars and students and schools are fully supported, from Dr. Chaney. Awesome, thank you.
Okay, good evening, folks. Let's proceed with our meeting. The time now is 6:36, and I'm going to do the roll call. District 1, Jasmine Bowles.
Present.
District 2, Mark Christmas.
Present.
District 3, Dr. Jessie Goree. District 4, Victoria Williams. District 5, Dr. D. Haney. District 6, Mary Baker. District 7, Ms. Sabrina Hill.
Present.
District 8, Ms. Joy Tellis Cooper. And our District 9, present. Superintendent, Dr. Anthony Smith.
Present.
Senior Deputy Superintendent, Chief of Staff, Dr. Douglas Hendricks. Attorney Clem Doyle.
Present.
Board Liaison, Kim Blackwood. Assistant to the Superintendent, Ms. Alicia Battles. Assistant to the Deputy Superintendent, Ms. Dawn Biles. Thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to read the ethics statement. In accordance with Board Policy BH, it is the duty of every board member to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearance of such conflicts. Does any board member have any known conflict of interest or appearance of such conflict with respect to any matter scheduled to come before the board at this meeting or appearing on our proposed agenda? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict and refrain from participation in the matter involved. We have some recommendations from the executive session. Mr. Superintendent? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, public participation? We have five individuals that have signed up for public participation. If I pronounce your name incorrect, can you please correct me when you get to the podium? Before doing public participation, I'm going to read our public participation policy. The Clayton County Board of Education welcomes public participation and will hear any interested individuals pursuant to the guidelines outlined, Policy BCBI. Members of the public will not be allowed to discuss individual personnel issues or confidential student matters. Speakers must identify themselves and topics before speaking. Speakers will be given three minutes to speak, and time may not be yielded from one speaker to another. Board members will not respond to comments from speakers. The chairman may respond as appropriate. Issues requiring possible action by the board may be added to future agendas. Issues that may not, issues that may need to be addressed by the administration will be duly noted. Abuse of language and/or personal attacks will not be permitted. The first speaker for this evening is Marv O'Leary Harris. Hello, Ms. Harris, did I get your name correct?
Yes, Marv O'Leary Harris. And I am here to speak on behalf of Tapestry Charter School. I understand that they're looking to be voted in to be allowed to open a school here in Clayton County. And I feel that what they can bring to the county would be teachers who can focus on their, the students with neurodiverse learning challenges, where they can help them with students that may not have the ability to speak, those who deal with dyslexia, and all spectrums of autism. And I feel like we should look at them as if they're our partners and not our adversaries. Like going to the doctor, you have your primary care physician, but at the same time, you have your cardiologist, your oncologist, your radiologist, and your other specialists. So we should have them join us as our partners. And I appreciate your time for listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Harris. Next speaker is Patricia Neely, my friend, Patricia Neely. Hey, Ms. Neely.
How are you? Good evening, board members, Superintendent Smith and Clayton County Community. I'm Patricia Neely, a District 1 representative and resident. I stand before you as a mother fueled by hope and an unwavering belief in every child's potential. I have witnessed firsthand the power of our public schools through my daughter's success here in Clayton County. But my son navigating autism and ADHD revealed a different truth, a system unintentionally hindering his brilliance. As his advocate, I saw three schools promise his support, and yet we still haven't found the right learning environment for him. And that's why I had to begin to search for different options. I first discovered Tapestry Public Charter School over five years ago at a school expo in Atlanta. Imagine a school where neurodiversity is celebrated, individualized learning is the core, and where educators understand autism and how to teach those students needs. This is Tapestry. I knew this school would be perfect for my son. The only problem, it's not in Clayton County currently. For families like mine, Tapestry is not just an option, it's a chance for our children to truly thrive. It's an environment where students feel understood, supported, and empowered. Tapestry is a critical tool in the toolbox of education. It's an investment in the future of Clayton County children. Regardless of neurodiversity, they can learn, grow, and contribute to their unique brilliance. As a parent, my hope is that as a board, you support Tapestry Public Charter School and approve their petition. Thank you for your time, consideration, and commitment to all of Clayton County students.
Thank you, Ms. Neely.
Thank you.
Ms. Maria Kepler?
Good evening. My name is Maria Alejandra Kepler, Assistant Principal at Tapestry Public Charter School. Tonight, I would like to share some of the work that we do to support student social and emotional wellbeing, not only so that they can more readily access learning, but also life. Tapestry's dreams for our students extend beyond the time they are with us. We equip each child to live a life of choice to the greatest ability each is able. One of the foundations for this work is our passion for diversity. Tapestry is a Title I majority-minority school. We celebrate our many beautiful cultures with our kids taking the lead and always pushing us to do more. However, the center of Tapestry's diversity and the point from which all of the rest of our diversity stems is its neurodiverse and inclusive mission. For over 10 years, we have maintained a roughly 50-50 balance of neurotypical and neurodiverse kiddos. The benefits for our neurodiverse students are obvious. Inclusive classrooms, inclusive extracurriculars, and inclusive athletics mean that they can enjoy a school experience that would not be available to many of them before. The benefits for our neurodiverse and neurotypical kids alike are just as powerful, yet less expected. The cultural competence developed when you work and learn alongside all different kinds of people breaks down the assumptions and biases we carry within us. However, anyone who has worked with children for more than five minutes knows that creating this kind of best-case scenario environment involves infusing best practices with intention and creativity. We support the process of kids learning to understand and regulate themselves so that they can join their communities, both in and out of school. Exclusionary discipline or out-of-suspension rates have fallen far below averages, especially for our special education students. Behavior is a form of communication, and discipline is an opportunity to build relationships where all sides are heard. This year, our staff have facilitated 19 lunch bunches, gathering students to explore interests, make new friends, build social skills. We run PIERs, a nationally recognized program for social development. Every staff member in the building gets trained in mindset de-escalation strategies, with two of our staff being certified trainers. Additionally, eight staff have received mediation and restorative practices training through a partner organization, the Georgia Conflict Center. We're completing a series of wellness push-ins led by our inclusion and behavior team covering topics such as self-care, mental health, bullying, positive relationships, and accountability. Each student in our middle school has participated in this series in a small group setting. 20 staff have collaborated in this small group work because social and emotional and behavioral support is everyone's job. Each kid is everyone's kid. Through service, mediation, mind mapping, social stories, lunch bunches, collaborative conferences, and team meetings, re-entries, and promoting student choice, we give students the opportunity to use their voices and to be heard, teaching them new ways to communicate so that they can grow into the world waiting for them beyond our doors. We love our school, and we believe in our model. We very much hope to be able to bring Tapestry to Clayton and to collaborate for the kids and the families here. Thank you.
That was such perfect timing. Ms. Tina Burgess?
Good evening. I'm speaking on behalf of Tapestry Public Charter School. My name is Tina Burgess. I am a 7th grade ELA teacher, ELA Social Studies teacher at Tapestry Public Charter School. It is truly an honor to stand before you today to talk about something that lies at the heart of everything I do as an educator, a community member, and a human being, inclusion. a community member, and a human being: inclusion. Not just in theory or on paper, but real, active, intentional inclusion. I want to begin by acknowledging something that until recently has been a bit of a taboo topic in the African-American community. Students with special needs have often been overlooked, their struggles dismissed, and their strengths underestimated, and their voices unheard. Whether due to stigma, lack of access to resources, or deep-rooted systemic inequities, these students have too often been placed on the sidelines of education and society. Tapestry isn't just a school where students with special needs and general education students are placed in the same classroom. It's a place where every child feels seen, heard, valued, and celebrated for exactly who they are. It's a place where we don't force children to fit into a mold. Instead, we shape the mold to fit the child. For students who have often struggled with fitting in in society, inclusion means no longer feeling invisible. It means walking into a classroom and seeing a teacher who believes in you, peers who accept you, and a school culture that lifts you up. It means developing the confidence to raise your hand, ask questions, and try again after failing because you're in a space that says we've got you. Emotionally, these students begin to heal. They begin to trust. Socially, they start to connect with others, build friendships, and feel a sense of belonging. And when a child believes they belong, everything changes. Their academic performance improves, yes, but just as importantly, their sense of self, their hope for the future, and their inner joy comes alive. As a teacher at Tapestry, I get to watch students not just survive, but thrive in their areas of strength. Whether it's reading, writing, or exploring history, our job is to uncover and amplify each child's unique abilities. I've seen a child who once sat silently in the back of a room become a leader in a group project. A student with learning differences helped another classmate see the world from a fresh perspective. I've seen empathy grow, barriers fall, and true community take root. A school like Tapestry doesn't just benefit the students with special needs, it enriches the entire school. It teaches all students compassion, patience, collaboration, and respect. It shows them the beauty of diversity, not as a challenge to overcome, but as a strength to celebrate. So today, let us look at Tapestry as a step in stone for our students of Clayton County, where the educators don't just teach for tests, but teach for transformation, where teachers fight for the students whose needs have been ignored. Tapestry is not only a welcoming environment for all students, but a necessity for those who have always been overlooked. Thank you.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Angel Willingham?
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Angel Willingham, and I'm here to talk to you guys about Tapestry. I'm going to preface my words with the fact that I often get emotional when I talk about Tapestry. I have a seventeen-year-old graduating senior. And while that is really amazing, I want to share with you all where he came from. On December fifteenth, twenty seventeen, I sat at a doctor's office and they told me that my son had autism and ADHD and a math delay. They told me he was basically a little Sheldon, and we could expect him to spend a lot of time in his room with his computers and his trains, and he probably wouldn't have much of a social life. We found Tapestry.
Take your time, ma'am.
People typically think about autistic children as just like what they said, you know, kids who are in their room with their computer and their trains and their toys. My kid graduates this year with a 3.3 GPA, a 1,200 SAT score. He does little stimmy things with his hands sometimes. He's also the season basketball MVP, a four-time all-conference athlete in four separate sports, has a cadre of friends who hang out at our house every weekend. I'm the designated mom. I take everyone to Six Flags and whitewater and do all the things. But he graduates this year as a strong, competent young man, and he did not enter Tapestry that way. Tapestry is ten years old. This is our seventh year as part of Tapestry. I walked in just a regular mom, looking for a place for my kid to be accepted and beloved, and I found that there with our admin team and our teachers. And in finding that, I became a part of the Tapestry family. I started out as just a PTO, a woman on the PTO. My second year there, I became a cheerleading coach. From there, I became vice president of the PTO. And this year, I'm finishing up my second year as athletic director. So when I say Tapestry is a family that grows our students, that's what I mean. It sucks you when it makes you want to be part of it because it's so good. The children not only are learning what they need to learn, but they're getting that social life that they wouldn't get at a typical high school or typical middle school. I'm so thankful for our Tapestry family, and I'm really, really hopeful that you guys will be welcome to opening Tapestry in Clayton.
Thank you so much, ma'am, and thank you for that story. Ladies and gentlemen, that completes the public participation for the day. We now have some recommendations from the executive session. Mr. Superintendent, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, community, and colleagues. I have two recommendations. I would like the board to consider for the position of Coordinator of Instructional Technology, Mr. Daniel Lee.
Okay. You guys were ready to go, huh?
Do I have a motion for Mr. Daniel Lee?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Corrie?
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation of Mr. Daniel Lee as the coordinator for instructional technology.
Fantastic. Do I have a second, Ms. Baker?
I second that.
Fantastic. The motion has been moved and properly seconded. Can I get everyone's votes? It looks like it's unanimous. Mr. Lee?
Thank you so much, board, Mr. [applause]. Congratulations, sir. There he is. Congratulations. Thank you, board, for that support. I would also like the board to consider for the position of Coordinator of Technical Operations, Mr. George Rosasama.
Do I have a motion for Mr. George? I'm not going to try to pronounce this last name.
I practiced, sir.
Ms. Cooper?
I would like to accept the superintendent's recommendation for Mr. George Rosasana as the coordinator of technical operations.
And I'd like to second that vote. The motion has been properly moved, and seconded. Can I have a vote? Looks like that one is unanimous also.
All right. Congratulations. Mr. Rosasama, if you're here, please stand, be recognized. Congratulations, sir. Congratulations. That concludes my recommendations, board, but I would like a moment of personal privilege to thank a board member, Ms. Sabrina Hill, for giving us a nudge to consider presenting at the Georgia School Board Association's conference. And we did that. We submitted our proposal, no dead ends before E effect. And not only was the proposal accepted, but they want us to present at the big annual conference instead of their summer conference. So thank you, Mrs. Hill, for that encouragement, and we'll get a chance to be on a big stage, letting folks know what we do here in Clayton County. I would also like to recognize a phenomenal colleague. He was one of only sixteen people nationwide selected under former President Joe Biden's administration for the Lifetime Achievement Service Award. This award speaks to a lifetime of making a difference in the community and lives of others. The award will be presented by the nominating organization on Thursday, June eighth. More details to follow. And the person I'm referring to is my great colleague and a good friend for over twenty-five years, our very own Chief Deputy Superintendent of Schools, I mean Chief Deputy Superintendent, Chief of Staff, Mr. Dr. Douglas Hendricks.
You forgot your name, man.
We salute you, young man. Thank you. Thank you, board members, for allowing me to acknowledge those two individuals.
Okay, next time, we're going to ask the superintendent to wait until the update before he starts shouting everybody out. We still got some easements to go for the executive recommendation. The executive session. I have an easement request for the Ribidale Early Learning Center by Georgia Power. Can I get a motion? Ms. Corrie?
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for the easement requested by Georgia Power at the Ribidale Early Learning Center.
I second that motion. The motion has been made and seconded. Can I get a vote? What was that? Have you? Okay. All right, Ms. Baker? Got you. The people who have been promoted and placed into jobs, please don't leave until we take your picture. Mr. Rosasama? Right, hold on for one second. And Mr. Lee, you're still here? Okay, perfect. All right. The motion has been passed with eight votes in favor, one abstention. Two? Okay, I'm sorry. And Ms. Bowles, are you abstention? Nope. Okay. Eight votes for, one abstention. The easement has passed. The next motion that I need is for the E.J. Swent, Georgia Power easement. Mr. Christmas?
I move that we accept the easement for E.J. Swent from Georgia Power.
Do I have a second? Ms. Williams? Fantastic. The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Can I get a vote? I have eight votes in favor, one abstention. Next, I have Tara Stadium Fieldhouse for a Georgia Power easement. Can I get a motion, Ms. Hill?
I motion that we accept the recommendation for the Tara Stadium easement.
Thank you. And a second, Ms. Cooper?
Second.
Fantastic. The motion has been moved and properly seconded. Can everyone place their votes? I have eight votes in favor, one abstention. Next, I have Lovejoy High School, a Georgia Power request for easement. Can I get a motion, Ms. Bowles?
I move that we accept the easement request for Lovejoy High School.
Fantastic. Can I get a second? Ms. Baker?
I second it.
Fantastic. The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Can I get a vote? I have eight votes in favor, one abstention. Lastly, I have the Ash Street, Georgia Power easement request. Can I get a motion, Ms. Williams?
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation.
And I second that motion. The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Can I get your votes? The motion passes with eight affirmative and one abstention. That completes the recommendations from executive session. Thank you very much. We now will have we now will have updates from the board now. Oh, sorry. Three and some. Rosasama. All right. Councilman Dixon? Are you in the house? Councilman Dixon? There he is. Nope. That's Lee. All right. I thought I saw him. Was he here earlier? Okay. All right. Let's get into the board updates. Each board member will have ninety seconds to give updates as they please. I'm going to yield my time to Ms. Teles Cooper. She's going to take my ninety seconds to give you a total of three minutes. We'll start with Ms. Bowles.
All right. Greetings. Good afternoon, colleagues and community. On behalf of not only District One, but just the latest that's happening at the Capitol, as many of you all know, we just closed out our legislative session here in Georgia. And with the end of session comes new decisions. Your General Assembly has one job, kind of like the Board of Education, and their one job is to pass an annual budget. So that happened, and in the budget, I'd love to offer just a few updates that have transpired in the world of education. So when it comes to some budget findings, you can think about. This upcoming budget, which is going to take place July first, 2025, and take us through June thirtieth, 2026, is a total of $37.8 billion, which is a 4.4 increase from last year. That matters because we often hear about our state having a surplus. And so I just want you to know that that is represented slightly in the budget. And so we can see some security grants, some sparsity grants, allocations for character education, and decreases in interesting places. Like there's no additional money for school supplies. We are also seeing a decrease in nutrition funds and equalization funds and school nurses, which is all really unfortunate. We do see some increases in places like mental health allocations, transportation, literacy investments, dual enrollment. There is a new child tax credit bill and a great deal of funding for charter schools. We're also seeing a $141 million allocation for the Promise Scholarship, which is one way that we're seeing some public school funding find its way into private schools. So I wanted to flag that for all of you as well. And we also hope to see the governor sign a bill that expands sick leave for teachers from the current three days to what we hope will be five days. So those are a few updates on behalf of So, those are a few updates on behalf of District One and Legislative Session for Education.
Thank you, Ms. Bowles. Next, we have Mr. Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. First and foremost, y'all saw the Eagles went to state, and I'm proud of that. But I had an opportunity to visit Tapestry Schools. And I thought it was an amazing school, one. The other thing is that the Capet 301 was good for me. The individualized learning was good. We need to really take a look at how we do education. And Tapestry have a good program for those kids who have those needs. The individualized learning, the individualized seating, the cool-off room, and everything else that accompanied with Tapestry. I know most of us sit up here and we get all this information. I just took it apart myself to read the information and then go visit the school. And so, I think we ought to at least take a look and make sure that we are doing what's best for the children of Clayton County who have these disabilities. And I think we would go so much further. It was good seeing that mother come up and speak about her child and those things. But I think we ought to, as a community, at least have a look and make sure that we are doing the best for our children. The residents of Clayton County should not have to go outside of county to get the services that Tapestry provide. Thanks. Have a good.
Thank you, Mr. Christmas. And thank you for that. Ms. Corey?
I'm going to start off with piggybacking off of what Mr. Christmas says. I have been an advocate for a special educational setting in Clayton County Public Schools for years. That has been one of my goals, as he mentioned. Parents should not have to go spend $20,000 or more a year for an education. And they have been taxpayers in the county. So, I am in total agreement with him. And I sat in on our screening for their charter. So, I am in agreement with him. I also want to thank everyone. I, we didn't have our last board meeting, as you know. March was Women's History Month. And I need to thank everyone for their support for my girls' conference. I particularly want to thank my colleagues for their support. Mr. Christmas, Ms. Williams, Mrs. Straker, Ms. Baker, Dr. Haney, for supporting me by attending the event. My right-hand person, Ms. Kim Blackwood. I couldn't have done it without her. And of course, I need to salute our superintendent, Dr. Anthony Smith, because he allows us to have a whole district-wide field trip for our young ladies. And I'm just waiting for that building to open next year because it can be bigger and greater. I want to thank every department because it takes the whole school district to make that event happen. And I don't wanna call our departments because I know I'll forget one. But I especially wanted to shout out Communications because this year, the Communications Department livestreamed the event. So, everyone was able to see the event in their school. And the girls had a great time. It's really a great event. And I wanted to just thank everybody for that. I also would like to thank Ms. Given. I don't know how to flap this fan yet, but as soon as I get the step or boots on the ground, I will be so I wanna thank you for dropping that off. And I will pass the mic to Ms. Williams.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to say, in March, we hosted the Women's Event with Ms. Rice kept us hosting, Sabrina. And we had a silent auction to raise money for MS. And we raised $1,500. I didn't get to say that last, we're going to say it. But in that foundation, that's when my mom passed away, up in 2016. And I just want to let everybody know that to take care of yourself, take care of your body because you only get one body. And when you gone, you gone. So, just remember to take care of yourself first.
Ms. Williams, since you didn't use all of your 90 seconds, I did forget something. I do need to give myself a pat on the back since recognitions were given out. But I was the recipient of the Samuel H. Johnson SSP Foundations Award, the lone recipient. That I will receive that honor on April 27th. Somebody's been watching me. And sometimes when you can't get other people to notice what you're doing, it was a pleasant surprise for Minister Holly to give me a call and tell me that he's been watching me for these 17 years and that he felt like I was doing a great job. So, I'm gonna give myself a pat on the back. And I appreciate that recognition.
Ms. Baker?
Okay. I'm gonna do it a little different. For those of you who haven't found out yet, we have a new Clayton County boutique, which is across from Arnold Elementary School. And it's called Suit Yourself. And this is where you can take clothes to donate gently used. If you're like me and things have shrunk in your closet, it's a good time and a good place. And then, it gives our employees a place to come and get a new outfit for themselves or for their children. So, they take, like I said, gently used clothes, men, women, children, and then some household items. They're open Tuesday through Thursday, 10 to 12, and 3 to 5 on those days. The other two days are used for restocking. So, like I said, time to clean closets, it's springtime.
Thanks, Ms. Baker. Ms. Dr. Haney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. GMAS time. I wanted to give recognition, she had already left, but to Taj Given, who is one of the student engagement specialists over at Riverdale Middle. They are having a Blast the GMAS pep station over at it's between Drew and Riverdale's clusters. And the address is at 95 Valley Hill, April 24th. I know that we do have a retirement celebration as well. But if you all can swing by and help celebrate and just show support to our students as well as our families and prepare our students for this GMAS. Again, that's April 24th, 5:30 to 7:00 P.M. And that's between the Riverdale and Drew clusters.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Haney. Ms. Hill?
Good evening, everyone. I wanna say, excuse me. I wanna say thank you to New Vision Christian Church, who partnered with me on Saturday, April the 12th. We had our first of three NACA home workshops. And it was well-attended by our Clayton County employees. And I wanted to just say, if you missed this one and you're interested, we will have our next one on May 3rd and then another one on June 7th. I wanna encourage everybody to come out. Do not disqualify yourself. I want you to come out and have an opportunity to learn and hear how you can become a homeowner. In addition to that, I want to say I will be hosting a town hall meeting at 5:30 P.M. on April the 16th at the Cafe. I will be talking about academics. But most importantly, I wanna hear from our family and our community on what matters most to them. So, I encourage everyone to come out. And I look forward to seeing you April the 16th at 5:30 P.M.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. And I think, Ms. Cooper, we could go straight to the video?
Yes.
Good deal.
As we celebrate Women's History Month, I want to personally spotlight and celebrate all women who have played pivotal roles in shaping our communities, industries, and society as a whole. Women of diverse backgrounds have been essential to the progress, breaking barriers, paving the way for new opportunities, and advocating for a more inclusive world. Hello, I'm Joy Teller Cooper, proud to serve as your Board of Education member representing District 8. Women's History Month offers us the chance to reflect on and honor the countless women who have used their voices, courage, and leadership to create lasting change. These trailblazers from business, politics, and education to science, advocacy and the arts are just history makers, but mentors and role models for generations to come. Their resilience, brilliance, and strength continues to inspire us to push boundaries, challenge norms, and advocate for equality. Personally, many of my dreams and aspirations have been shaped by remarkable women who laid the foundation for progress, opened doors, and dismantled obstacles, allowing me to serve in this esteemed role today. Amongst them are professional mentors, family, and friends, including my mother, Reba Daniels, and my aunt, Cynthia Brooks Borns, my financial mentor, Cheryl Harrison, and the late, great Commissioner of Clayton County, Ms. Sona Singleton Gregory, whose legacy lives on in our community. Let the women featured in this video and those honored throughout history remind us to seize every opportunity to be agents of change, raise awareness, and make a lasting impression. Let's not close the books on Women's History Month without carrying forward the spirit of appreciation and advocacy every day of the year.
Thank you so much, board members.
So, really quickly, even though we closed the books on Women's History Month, I just wanted to give thanks to the Communication Department because without them, I could not have done this video for Women's History Month and been able to interview these phenomenal women throughout our Clayton County community. So, all of these women are individuals that have done something either in our community or they're working with our schools. So, it was a joy. Once again, I wanna thank the Communication Department, Dr. Lee's Department. So, thank you so much, Jada, Ronald. I don't wanna miss anybody, but you know, the entire communications team. So, thank you so much.
Good deal.
All right. Thank you, team. Mr. Chairman, board members, this time, I would like updates to the board. I would like for Dr. Delphia Young and Dr. Keith Coburn to come forward.
Dr. Smith.
Before you two start your presentation, let me just briefly speak to my board in regards to what's about to come up. Board members, I've had the great pleasure of working with the two individuals that you see at the podium now, Dr. Keith Coburn and Dr. Young. They have been helping me tremendously in refocusing our attention on student achievement and positive student outcomes. I think what you're going to see with the agenda setting as we go forward is based off of this presentation you're gonna see tonight, they're gonna give us the metrics that we need to be looking at. So, I want everybody to pay attention to the things that they're telling us to focus on because we have one employee, which is the superintendent. And if we want him to concentrate on our core business, which is student outcomes, positive student outcomes, and student achievement, I believe that the team that he has under him are geared up, especially for the 2025-2026 year coming, to truly get us focusing on keeping them accountable and keeping us in the loop to what we should be watching in order for these students to raise their achievements. So, with that said, I'll hand it over to you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Before they start, can we recognize Mr. Frank Cobb from the Riverdale City Council, please?
If you could stand up, Mr. Cobb?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready?
Yep.
Well, good evening, Board Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, superintendent, audience in our larger community. Dr. Coburn and I are pleased to present to you some information. Mr. Straker has set the stage for us. And so, we were asked to share with you some information about our resources. And I really hope you had a chance to look at your document on the executive summary of the Resource Utilization Report. On the last second page, there was a link. I hope you had a chance to open up that link. And we just wanna share with you that information. I'm gonna start first with the resource discussion. And then, Dr. Coburn and I will share information about the CCRPI indicators, okay? So, I wanna be very brief as this can be a long meeting. Hopefully, when you open up your spreadsheet, we've been charged over the last couple of years to really look at our resources. What do we have in place? And so, what we're trying to do is to compile a single document that communicates to our community and especially to the members of our board, the resources that you have approved or we are using in the school district. And so, the first thing that I wanna share with you is that the spreadsheet, if you have access to the presentation, their underlying assessment initiative consultant and resource inventory sheet, that is a clickable link. And so, you can open up that document. When you open up the spreadsheet, it is a Google spreadsheet. And it will have four tabs. And the tabs are listed worksheets that are listed there in order of the inventory assessment. Those are what are the assessments that we administer to our students. And these are district-wide assessments, typically from classroom unit assessment or math assessment or the state assessment or the national assessment. These do not go down into what's happening in the schools. And then, we have initiatives. You always hear us talk about the different initiatives that we're implementing. And we wanted to share with you some of those initiatives. We're giving you a description of those initiatives, et cetera. And then, we have our resources. What are those resources that we are using in our schools and our classroom? And in some cases, district-wide. And then, we also work with various consultants who provide us from support with professional development all the way to program evaluation to see how effective we are. And so, that is the information that we have for you. We do ask you to look at that information. You know, write down your questions, communicate those questions according to the process that Dr. Hendricks has shared with all of us. And we'll be glad to respond to those questions there. And so, just very briefly, I just wanna share these slides. I want to spare only two seconds just to remind you of what we have there. We are still in the process of putting the data into our spreadsheet. And I'm so glad that we're doing it because now we are truly responsible for communicating to parents what we're doing. And so, this tool gives us that opportunity to do that in more detail. Of course, you've already heard about the requirements for parents to know about the curriculum. Now, parents can know about even more things. And so, when we get this to the format that we would like to have it in, it would be available on our website for our parents to also access. And so, we're hopefully to have this in place by July 1st. Well, whatever the first, after the break of July, to have it. Are there any questions?
I have one question. And this question is for Dr. Coburn. Based off of the information that she just gave us, can you give me a perspective of how board members should receive that information?
Well, I would say one or two ways. Obviously, just to be aware of that information because that information drives decision-making. That information will be a part of the strategic planning, which is the process that you're undertaking now to develop a new strategic plan. This is just information and resources that we will use to be able to generate positive student outcomes.
Good deal. Ms. Hill?
Yes, thank you so much for this information. And I have a couple of questions, so bear with me. My first question is, what does reteaching entail in this context? Because I noticed that there was, when we were talking about outcomes, it indicated reteaching. So, if you could share that with us. And also, how is it determined which schools utilize which program? And what challenges are being faced in implementing those?
I'll take the first one with reteaching. That's the purpose of assessment. Assessment gives us an indication of what our students have mastered and what they have not mastered. Then, it gives us an opportunity to go back and reteach those concepts or skills that they did not master.
So, in terms of what school So in terms of what school, all schools have access to those tools. So when we think of resources, when we say district resources, we mean all schools. Now, there are some special situations like Cambridge. Cambridge is not for all schools. We have that at elite scholars. So all the other resources will be for all schools, but not all resources for all students because you have some resources that are specifically designed for English learners. You have other resources designed specifically for students with disabilities. But all schools who have those groups of students have access to those tools, okay? And the last question was implementation barriers. So the implementation barriers can be multifold, but the primary barrier is this, is making sure that our teachers have the know-how to use the tools with great fidelity. And so that's why you see a lot of, you hear and see a lot of training going on with our teachers and our leaders. The process we usually do when we bring in an adoption, you will see two things on that adoption. You'll see the resources that we're asking you to agree for us to have, but you also see in that adoption professional development, okay? So when we bring those requests to you, we bring to you the opportunity to train our teachers. So while we are training our teachers, we also have to respond to the turnover that we have in our school district. And so a lot of times, we are starting at square one, and we have to address the retention of our staff, and that's one of the work of the school board. What does retention look like for Clayton County Public Schools? What does the school board want to put on the table for us to retain our teachers, especially when we are responsible for training them?
And may I follow back up on just the one? When we talked about the resources are available to all schools, does that mean that our schools have autonomy on what they select and how that goes? Because it takes me back to a concern that I've had with parents, that when their children are at different schools, it's hard for them to keep up because the learning styles are very different, the information is very different, and so they have a hard time balancing. So if I'm hearing you correctly, while the resources are available, it may not be required and/or mandated, and autonomy falls on the actual schools?
No, 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 no. So I'm going to start off, and then Dr. Coburn, I'm going to speak from the teaching and learning side. So the resources that we have are designed for instruction, okay, for most part. And so we have created for this school year lesson plans. Those lesson plans are available, required for every single teacher who has those lesson plans, okay? We have a curriculum, we have resources, whether it's through social studies, health, PE, fine arts, math, science, language arts, world language. We have the expectation for all teachers to use those resources and use those resources with fidelity. Now, that's what the expectations are, and it's always the translation of what happens in the classroom, and so I'm going to ask Dr. Coburn to respond to that.
And the second component to that is how we monitor the use of those resources. It's the opportunity for us to improve and get better at is our monitoring. If we expect the schools and the teachers to be able to use those resources, we have to monitor that they are using those resources and not just look at it for a presentation like this. It's an ongoing process for us monitoring those use of resources.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Ms. Corrie?
So if the information that you presented, is this a part of the data dashboard that we purchased?
So our data dashboard reflects data per se, numbers and values. This will not, it can be part of the dashboard, but it will not be in terms of numbers until we get to usage reports. And so we hope to have that part, but that's way down the line for our data dashboard. So we've got several things we'll be doing. Listing what we have in that spreadsheet, listing out what we have in place, and then the data usage will come, especially when we look at the data usage, when the vendor sends, hey, we had Delphia Young High School, 500 teachers, we had 20% using, I'm just making that as an example, we will have that part of our dashboard, but that's going to be later. It's not, we're not there for that part of the dashboard.
So is that a no?
No, we won't have it just yet, but it will come.
Okay, so that's a no. Okay, so then, help me to understand this dash of this assessment inventory. Ms. Hill asked some very interesting questions, which I'm trying to follow up on. So you mentioned our curriculum, you said some schools won't have this, so is this an individual, is this individually by schools?
No, no, these data points are for the entire school district.
Okay, so you mentioned that maybe that particular school wouldn't have Cambridge or whatever. Will everybody be able to look at what is in, what is the information that you're giving to us?
Yes, they can open up that spreadsheet, yes.
Okay, because I see the first thing I see is assessment, but I'm just trying to see a relationship to why then we would have a dashboard and all those.
So.
And what is the difference between this and rapid identity? Because rapid identity seems to have a lot of this information.
So that same, so the rapid identity will have given you access to those individual components that you see in that spreadsheet. The spreadsheet is just a compilation. Instead of asking, instead of going to rapid identity and looking, see, okay, we have HMH, we have SAVES, we have illuminate, we have this, that, and the other, we're putting it all together for our families and for you all to be able to see what we have with a quick, easy, at a glance. And like I said, I'm real glad that we are doing that because now we are required to do that.
Okay, I get, I'm just trying to differentiate between the two things. Thank you.
Ms. Baker?
I really appreciate this. Over the years, I've heard from teachers, we just get one new one, and we don't even get that one used, and they give us another new one, and I just have always wondered how many of these are we still paying for? So in the future, say, we get ABC, whatever, I would like to see that that is repl, that when we get that, when you bring that to us, you're going to say, this is going to be something added, or it is going to replace.
Say it louder. Say it louder.
Because teachers have told me that they're just overwhelmed with, you know, and especially, oh, well, the new principal came in, and all those books are sitting in the closet over there, so I'd like to send them back or send them to somebody else or get a refund.
I say it louder so everybody can hear it. So we spend a lot of time making decisions about if things are not being used as it should be, then we just cannot continue to pay for. And I've said this a million times, the team is fully aware of it, that's why I say it, say it louder, so people can hear that if these resources are not used with the fidelity, or if they are being used with fidelity and are not giving us the outcomes that we want, they also will be eliminated. So that's why it's so nice to have a list there so that you can see, and then you can quiz us, how's it going? Okay? And I just give an example, so we created the math trails using a grant, you know, we have to know how, who is visiting, how many people are visiting those math trails because someone may come to you as a board member and say, you know what, we got two math trails, and I'd really like to have one in my community. You ought to be able to say, wait, the math trail at ABC has only seen two visitors. So you're just trying to build that case up for us to make those kinds of decisions, okay?
Excellent. So we can move on to the CCRPI indicators?
Okay. All right. Okay.
I've had the opportunity to share components of the College and Career Readiness Performance Index. As I presented in the past, it is made up of five categories. Content mastery, progress, closing the gaps in readiness, and graduation rates for high schools. Those are the five major components of the College Career Readiness Performance Index. Content mastery, it measures just the readiness for the next grade level or college or career. Progress, measure growth based on academic, the similar peers. Closing the gap is just what it states, closing the gaps, each subgroup is given a improvement target, 3% target, and that subgroup has to reach that target in order to continue to close the gap between general education students and subgroups. And the readiness measures just, you know, measures how well our students are demonstrating their preparedness for the next level. You will see an achievement level for reading in that category, student attendance beyond the core, accelerated enrollment for high school, pathway completion for high school, and college and career readiness for high school. And then the final component of the College and Career Readiness Performance Index is graduation rate for high school, which is the four-year graduation rate and the five-year adjusted graduation rate.
Thank you. So just to be mindful, one of the things that the members of the board ask often, you know, what goes into CCRPI? And one of the things I want to share with you, and Ms. Corrie, you asked about the data, these are all the data that go into the CCRPI. And so when you hear, we need to have a student information system, yes, we do, because that's where we get all of our data. It feeds into the State Department, all right? So we want to share with you, when we say, do we want to pay for that SAT, or ACT, or AP, or IB, or Cambridge exams? Yes, we do, because it feeds into the CCRPI. And so these are the data sources that we have to make sure that our schools are responsible for, I think, I think, I think she hit something. All right, it's all right, Kim. All right. So one of the things about the CCRPI, recently, the Governor's Office of Student Achievement just released something called the Single CCRPI Score. Now, I'll tell you, we haven't had a single CCRPI score since 2018, okay? I just want you all to know that, all right? And it used to be determined by the Georgia Department of Education, and it was used by the GOSE or Governor's Office of Student Achievement for various accountability reasons. And because what we have, the promise list, I think you've heard a lot about the promise school list, the law required a single CCRPI score. Had we not had that law in place, we wouldn't have a single CCRPI score. But because of the law, Georgia Governor's Office of Student Achievement has gone back to calculate the single CCRPI score based on 2019 determination. And the five components that Dr. Coburn shared with you are weighted to contribute to the final CCRPI score. And so what we have here is this chart that goes back, I said before, to 2019. GOSE goes out and takes those individual scores, and they weigh them. For example, content mastery is 30% for that particular score, and you can see the remaining scores, and I give you an example of how that's determined. And so from there, we had a release of the 2023 and 2024 single CCRPI score. And I know we're very, very proud and excited to announce where our improvement has been from the 2023 all the way to the 2024 single CCRPI score, and that was an 18.6 gain from 2023 to 2024, and it was also an improvement from the last time we had a CCRPI score for a single component score. And so you can see how we performed in comparisons to all the other schools. Again, Clayton County scored at the highest change in improvement from 2023 to 2024. So I just want to pause for a moment there so we can at least acknowledge that our schools have done a good job. And so here's just a presentation of how we fared in comparing to the state of Georgia. And so our CCRPI score for 2024, we closed the gap, we're so proud of us being able to close that gap from 2023 to 2024 for Georgia, and so we're excited about that. And so in order for us to continue to see these improvements in our first CCRPI component scores, that will help us have improvement in our CCRPI single score, and so I will allow Dr. Coburn to share that.
Before you all go to that, can you go back to that slide? Because I meant, I wanted to ask this question like two weeks ago.
Which one?
Go back to the one that has 20, that one. Now, is that really a true score?
Yes.
No, I'm talking about for APS, because I just could not.
This is what the State Department gave us. We don't calculate that. I mean, GOSE, sorry, that's the State Department. Apologize. It's what GOSE gives us.
I just, that just seemed quite unbelievable to me when I looked at everything around it, looking at, okay, I just, I'm sorry, I had to.
That's all right.
I guess I shouldn't call it a school district, but it is something about that.
So because we know that that may be asked, that link that's in the underline, you can go out there and click on that link, and it'll bring you the data. Go ahead.
So the indicators that we continue to use throughout the year that will feed College Career Readiness and the Performance Index is, of course, you've heard of speak of the MAP assessment that we use at the beginning of the year, middle of the year, and at the end of the year. That is probably our major predictor of how well our students are going to perform on some of the assessment. It gives us an opportunity to track progress. We want to make sure that our students are going from the beginning of the year assessment to the middle of the year assessment. And then it also gives us a projected proficiency as it pertains to the Georgia milestones. It also gives us an opportunity to identify how well our subgroups are performing. We can generate a report from the MAP NWA dashboard that will tell how well our subgroups are performing, and it also predicts college and career readiness. We often take a look to monitor where our seniors are throughout the year. We can use the student information system to ensure that our seniors, as it pertains to graduation rate, are on track to graduate, gives us an opportunity if we need to ask for more resources to be able to give our students and seniors opportunity to make up credit so that they will be eligible for graduation, it gives us an opportunity to do that. So one of the other components that we use to monitor readiness, and it's one of the indicators that Dr. Smith has shared with us, is attendance. This gives us an opportunity to monitor attendance throughout the year. As you can see, based on the graph that we're showing now, we are on pace to improve the attendance outcome as it pertains to the 10% of enroll dates. You will see two primary attendance reports. One is the average daily attendance, but for college, career, and performance index, it's based on absent less than 10% of the enrolled date. it's based on absent less than 10% of the enrolled days. For example, if I'm enrolled for 100 days, my 10% is capped at 10 days. If I'm over that 10 days, that is a negative rating for that particular school. So as you can see right now, we have 82.5% for elementary, 81.6% for middle school, and 72.5% for high school.
Not, not to, to put your back against the wall, but in regards to that, and I, I will not hold you to this. What, attendance seems like an easy one to get. It seems like one of the, the indicators that if we concentrate on, we, we can, we can definitely boost that number.
Got you.
What, what, what do you anticipate 2026, 2025, 2026? How much of a boost can I get on attendance?
We set our improvement goal, I think, at 3% each month.
3%, got you.
So we have a goal set at an increase of at least 3%, but, but as, as you know, we want more than that.
Right, got you.
But, you know, it's based, and we work hand in hand with the Student Services Department to go out and do home visits, do SAC meetings, collaborate with the courts when someone, a parent, is being very negligent with, with attendance. So we kind of partner in the key to attendance. It's almost just like instruction. We have to monitor it throughout the year.
So as a board member, and this is the purpose of this entire update, you're telling me that, hey, Ben, hold me to a 3%. You're like, look at, look at my numbers throughout the 180 days and hold me to at least that 3%.
Yes.
One more, but monitor that. And when do we ask you that question about where we're at? Give me the midpoint at when I should put this back on the agenda and go, hey, guys, how are we doing with attendance?
I would say semester in, that gives us a chance to run one semester. You can get it semester, or we can provide you a quarterly report, just whatever the board show desires.
So Board, you, you see what I'm doing here? What I'm saying is they're giving us the indicators that we should be watching. Now we know that when the agenda is set and attendance is on the agenda, we're going to ask Dr. Kobe, and we're going to ask Dr. Young, how are we doing with, with, with attendance? And that's what we're going to look at this guy with and say, hey, man, you got to do a better job, or you're doing a great job.
Well, Mr. Schrecker, since you said, hey, Board, I'm going to come and counter what you just said, because I don't think attendance, as a, as an educator by trade, I don't think that's an easy indicator. I think you're being a little naive about that.
When I say easy, what I mean is it's not, it's not, it's a difference in, go ahead, Ms. Curry.
Okay, I'm going to say this, we all know this since COVID. If you, if anybody goes back and looks at data, you will see that that's probably the, the, uh, one of the hardest things to monitor, because right now, we can't even account for probably most of our children from 2020. You have a, they're a whole different circumstances within the school district. You have a, a lot of students that are in, yes, you got, Mr. Chris just said, right now, you're looking at ICE. You're looking at the problem with homelessness. There are all types of indicators that I would not, although I know that there, you know, you all are going to come and say, we're going to do this, but in our honesty, I think that's a harder area than you think to, to hold. And I don't have a problem with us asking, but I don't, but I think it's harder than you think. Years ago, it used to be an easy one for us. I think our rate was always, you know, above 95% or more, but it really is not now. Just, not, not only for them, I mean, even if we talk about staff, you know, it's, it, there are a lot of different factors that play into attendance for everybody right now.
Your presentation.
So, so let's wrap up the attendance component here. If we continue on this trajectory for our schools, and our schools are showing this like level of improvement, this is where we can earn those extra points towards the CCRPI. In terms of any of the components of the CCRPI are difficult. They're not easy at all. And yet, we are still held accountable for those indicators. And so when you're thinking about how can we improve and address chronic absenteeism, which is nationwide, you have to ask yourself, what can we come to the table to agree upon and lift the attendance to school up? Something as simple as when you're having your community meetings, you ask, make, you, you, parents, I need for your baby to be at school. All right? And to be there on time, and to go to class, and be there every day. So we can hear that voice throughout Clayton County Public Schools, okay? Thank you. All right, so we have some really good news when we have our MAP data. And I want to tell you, when we look at.
I want to interrupt you for just a second. He didn't see my button. While we're still on, on the attendance, I'm just going to give a shout out. I was at Suter dropping off something today, and the entrance, they have thermometers of their attendance, and I will tell you, it's higher than that one right there. And I don't know what they're doing, but we might want to find out. And, you know, whether it's kids can get, if you, you know, don't miss so many days, you get a special prize, a chocolate, I don't care what it is, it doesn't take much. I know I had a daughter who had a 104 temperature and still wanted to go to school because she didn't want to disappoint her teacher. So teachers have a lot to do with that too, and I know that. But like I said, whatever it is that they're doing at Suter, we need to copy it. And, you know, hold parents responsible, you know? They get to come to timeout at school. So anyway, but I, I just wanted to give a shout out to them.
Thank you. Thank you for giving a shout out to Suter. I'm sure their assistant soup will follow up with that. Okay, so I was saying, so some exciting news is this. When we looked at the winter, because you all remember the MAP, we're still finalizing the end of year map. So I'm excited to see about the improvements that we will see for the end of year data. But this is a tool that really, really strongly correlate to predictive performance on the Georgia Milestone. And just to keep your eyes from going all over the page, I just want you to look at the words, projected proficiency summary, K-8 mathematics. And you can see where we had shown improvement from 2023 to 2024. And so our kids are showing improvement in their percentage of students who are developing proficient and distinguished learners. And so you can see that improvement when we look at two points in time. We also have similar improvements in the algebra, for you can see that as well. And you can see that our proficient and distinguished point improvements are really growing. Now, it's okay to have decreases in the beginning learner, okay? Because that's what we want to have. That's, we, we want to have those, all right? We, okay? And it's okay to have decreases in developing learners, as long as it doesn't, if, as long as those developing learners don't drop down into beginning learners. But if those developing learners are coming up to being proficient learners or distinguished learner, we are really excited about that. And we also have those improvements shown in the K-8 language arts. So we're excited about seeing the results of our Georgia Milestone. We have some good indications that we are on track, that our teachers and, and, and families and students and staff across the district are really pouring into our children, and we are beginning to see those changes. And we want to continue to see those changes there. And I leave you with what can our school and district leaders do as our slide to conclude our presentation. Are there any questions?
Any questions, board members? That means you did great. Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, team. Appreciate it. Thanks for the entire team for showing improvements across the board. Thank you.
Okay. We have the approval of the minutes. Did anybody see any changes on the board work session for February 24th, 2025? I'm sorry. I'm so, I'm so anxious to get out of here. Announcements, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Smith. My name is Makaiara Small, and I am an eighth grade scholar. Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Smith, District Administrators, and Citizens of Clayton County. My name is Makaiara Small, and I am an eighth grade scholar at Kendrick Middle School.
And my name is Desiah Smith. I am also a scholar at Kendrick Middle School in the eighth grade.
It is our pleasure to present the board announcements for the month of April.
April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month. The theme for 2025 is Powered by Hope, Strengthened by Prevention. During the month of April and throughout the year, families and communities are encouraged to increase awareness and provide education and support through resources and strategies to prevent child abuse and neglect.
April is National School Library Month, a celebration of school librarians and their programs. The theme this year is Drawn to the Library. Schools are encouraged to host events during the month focused on the essential role their school library media center plays in transforming learning.
The month is also home to National School Librarian Day. School librarians are dedicated to creating an environment where students can learn every day of the year, and we salute them for this impressive accomplishment.
UNIDOS Dual Language Elementary School, in partnership with City of Forest Park, will host a spring festival at Star Park on Thursday, April 24th. The event will begin at 4:00 PM and will feature food trucks and a host of fun activities. The cost for entry to the festival is $12.
Also, on Thursday, April 24th, Clayton County Public Schools will host a special celebration honoring its retirement class of 2025 in recognition of their years of service for the children of Clayton County. The retirement ceremony will be held at the Morrow Center located at South Lake Mall in Morrow, beginning at 6:00 PM.
The April Board Work Session is scheduled for Monday, April 28th at 5:00 PM. Unless otherwise announced, this meeting will be held in the boardroom of the School Administration Complex.
April is testing time. The spring end of course test will begin Monday, April 28th, and will continue through Friday, May 9th. The end of grade G mass testing for grades third through eighth will begin Monday, April 28th, and will continue through Friday, May 16th.
And finally, the May Board Meeting is scheduled for Monday, May 5th at 6:00 PM. This meeting will be held at the Performing Arts Center in Jonesboro.
Remember, the May 5th Board Meeting is at the Performing Arts Center of Jonesboro, not the Board Administration Complex.
Got it. Mr. Chair, that concludes tonight's announcements.
Seeing none, it'll be approved as submitted. Next, we have the board meeting of March 3rd, 2025. Is there any changes on the minutes for March 3rd, 2025? Seeing none, those will be approved as submitted also. We now are going to, now remember, we're doing the consent agenda. We will be voting on the things that are being presented to us today. So pay attention to the presentations and be prepared to vote on the consent block at the end of their, at the end of all of the presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, at this time, I ask Ms. Ramona Bivens to come forward and present a, the financial report, at which time she will propose hearing dates for our budget, so we can make certain that we get it approved ahead of, ahead of schedule, much greater than we did last year. So, Ms. Bivens.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Smith, colleagues and community. This evening, I'll be presenting the financial report as of February 28th, 2025. The revenue we collected so far through February 28th, it's $433 million, about 707.5% budgeted, that's 61.2%. We collected 76% of our property taxes. We've exceeded our local revenues with 55% of our QBE funds and 51.7% of our federal revenue. And on the expenditure side, we've spent 55% of our budgeted expenditures at $390 million, $390,92,000. And we're 67% through the year, so we're trending a little under in our expenditures. So any questions on the financial report?
Any questions on the financial report? Seeing none.
Okay, so next, I think we have budget amendments. On the agenda shows budget amendments, so I have, I think, seven of them. The first one is an amendment to recognize revenue received from the Clayton County Public Schools Foundation in the amount of $7,625. This was funding to support the Perfect Pits Competition held on March 4th. Can we go through all of these before you ask any questions about the budget amendments? Or do you want to ask questions after each one?
Board members, have you read the, the, the budget amendments? Has everybody familiar with the budget amendments?
Okay, so I just read each one, okay?
Yeah.
Just to go on the record. So the next amendment is to accept the donation from the Shrewsbury Graduate Supplies for the Communication Department in the amount of $5,000. This is, the sponsorship will be used to cover costs associated with the state of the schools event, including purchase professional services and supplies. The next one is an amendment to accept donations from the Jordan United Credit Union for the Community Engagement Department in the amount of $3,000. These funds will be utilized to provide monetary awards for the 2024, 2025 Teacher of the Year Gala. We have an amendment to establish the FY25 budget for grants received from the Georgia Department of Education in the amount of $18,531,617. And those are all attached to the back of your, for various grants from the state. The next amendment is to accept the donation from the Professional Association of Georgia Educators in the amount of $500 to be utilized to purchase supplies for social workers. We have an amendment to recognize revenue received from the destruction of diesel buses through the Clean Bus Grant in the amount of $28,190.40. This is also to recognize compensation received from Georgia Power due to damage to the fueling station resulting in the station's being inoperable for a period of time in that amount that we received from Georgia Power, $26,557.44. And the last amendment is to accept the grant received from the United Way of Greater Atlanta in the amount of $51,524 to be utilized for the Kinder Camp Program. That's all the amendments that we have. Okay? The next we have is our SPOS report for the month of February. The funds that we received in February, which is for the actual fund that we collected in January, we received $5,345,345,22, which is trending pretty much in line of where we were last year in February, although it is down some from January collections. Any questions on the SPOS report?
Any questions on the SPOS report? Seeing none.
All right, next we have. Yes, ma'am. Four, let me go back. So in January, which was for December, we had $6.7 million compared to $5.2 the year before. And then for February, which is what we received in January, was $5.3 million compared to $5.7 from last year. Okay. Then we have the purchasing report, the board, according to our board policy, the purchase of any non-consumable items with a value of $100,000 or more, and the purchase of a group of non-consumable items from a single vendor on individual or sequential purchase orders with a total value of $100,000 or more shall be approved by the Board of Education prior to purchase and/or prior to the execution of any agreement to purchase. This requires that we present this at each monthly board meeting and that we provide a report of all purchases greater than $10,000, which were approved during the prior month but not previously approved by the board. So we have Report A, which is consumable purchases made with a value of $10,000 or more. Report B, non-consumable purchases made with a value of $10,000 or more but less than $100,000. And Report C, non-consumable items with a value of $100,000 or more. And Report C, non-consumable items with a value of $100,000 or more that require board approval as detailed in the executive summary. We also have a supplemental purchasing report, um, with some items on there for the facility services and safety and security as well. So I'll be happy to answer any questions or I have staff that can answer if I don't know the answer to any of those.
Is there any questions in regards to the purchase report, Ms. Baker?
Um, on the supplement one of the vehicles that we're purchasing, and I understand why we need new vehicles. Old vehicles, are they, are they traded in? Or are they sold at auction through the state? And does that money come back into the general fund?
So if the vehicles, and Ms. Hall may be able to answer this, I'm gonna try. Um, the vehicles, once they've met their useful life, I believe we do surplus them and sell them, um, through the auction. Ms. Hall, is that correct? On GovDeal.com, I call it the auction. Yeah.
But then those funds would come back to the general?
They come back to the general fund, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Any other questions regarding the purchase report? Seeing none?
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Goree?
I do have a question. I sent a question to you all this afternoon. I didn't get a response, uh, in regards to the, um, in regards to these, um, I think, attendance.
Spring break incentive?
Yes.
I'm waiting on staff to give me that information.
You're waiting?
I'm waiting on staff to provide me that information, yes, ma'am. As soon as I get it, I'll send it to you.
Okay.
Okay. I'll send it to everybody, uh, yeah.
Ms. Hill?
I think one question you did answer maybe though was about the spring.
The spring break incentive?
Everybody received that.
Yes, ma'am, everyone received that.
Everyone, you say?
Everyone.
Including the APs and principals?
Everybody, every part-time, full-time, everybody.
Okay, looks like you all have been kind of slighting the APs and the principals on some things. I just want to be sure. Okay.
Oh, and Dr. Smith, you, you mentioned about the budget. So, um, I talked to Dr. Smith this morning. I think we finally have come to some type of, of budget that we want, that he wants to recommend. And he would like to set up some time next week, and I'll be reaching out to you to set up some time next week, some three-on-threes. And with the hope that we can do a tentative adoption at the next work session and have the public hearings at the, um, May meeting, the first May meeting, and then the second public hearing at the May work session. That's our plan right now, so.
Perfect. Ms. Hill, before I get to you, um, Dr. Hendricks, will the budget, um, um, recommendations be integrated in those strategic meetings?
Yes, sir.
They will, okay. Yeah. Right, okay. Okay, good.
I couldn't hear, who did you say? At, you, you gave a name that you're going to meet with whom? Who, who did you say?
No, it's that with each one of you all on three-on-threes for next week for the budget.
Repeat what you first.
So, Dr. Smith and I and Jean, we talked, Mr. Hendrick, and we talked today. We've kind, we've finally, we've come to some, um, recommendations that the superintendent would like to make. So the plan is to meet with you all, um, a couple of days next week on three-on-threes to discuss that. Hopefully, we do a tentative adoption at the next work session, end of April, and have the public hearings, because we have to schedule public hearings. And schedule the public hearings for May, for one, for May 5th. I think it's May 5th, that's the first Monday in May. And then the second one, um, I think it's May 19th, uh, which is the work session for May.
Okay, so this is what I'm gonna make a request to, to Mr. Chair for agenda, because I don't know where we are since we did not, we skipped the meeting and we're behind. So the next meeting that we have is the work session.
Yes, ma'am.
At the end of this month. At that time, there should be a presentation. I know you're saying that Dr. Smith is going to, we're gonna maybe do some three-on-threes, but that presentation should happen at the next meeting.
Yes.
Okay, because someone asked me today whether or not we've had that, uh, presentation, and I told them I didn't remember because with, although I appreciated the break, but I didn't think that we had discussed it. So I want to make certain that that is on the agenda.
We, we, we very much plan to have that on the agenda, and I believe that our strategic meeting is going to be prior to that meeting. So everything is just lined up perfectly. Fantastic people, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Ms. Hill?
Um, I didn't have a particular question regarding, um, your report, but I did want to ask, and we can talk about it in the future, about our buses. I noticed that we haven't seen any conversation, and I know that there's a huge concern, um, about our buses and what that looks like. So, um, if we could have more detail, I know we talked about it, um, at some point in time, but.
Yeah, that's brilliant idea, Ms. Hill, and we will definitely, um, um, squeeze it in when we, when we, um, get a moment. But I, I agree with you because we had originally started talking about buses maybe six months ago, like a year ago, and it seems like it's just dropped. So we definitely want to bring that back up, but let's take care of our priorities now and then be prepared to, um, get with, um, Dr. Smith and start that conversation up again. Is there any other questions in regards to the purchasing report? Seeing none, Mr. Ronan?
Thank you.
Mr. Joseph, I'm sorry.
Good evening, once again. You, you all have received the SPOS construction update. For the month of March, there were payments totaling $8.7 million. Uh, there were no change of orders for this period. Additionally, you received the capital purchasing reports for items under $100,000 and, and items for over $100,000 requiring board approval. Next, you, you received the executive summary for the various LED monument sign replacement bid. It is recommendation from the superintendent that Metro LED LLC, uh, be awarded the contract in the amount of $492,937, Uh, the locations are Hawthorne, Edmonds, Huey, Marshall, Southern Crescent and Riverdale Elementary School. Lastly, there's a resolution declaring the SPOS vote result. Um, it is recommendation from the superintendent that the board approve the resolution confirming the affirmative vote for the SPOS at 78%. Are there any questions?
Ms. Goree?
Yes, uh, I have a concern now as I drive past the Convocation Center. Our completion time, what is, what was it supposed to be?
Uh, we were tracking for, uh, August. Um, uh, we are, um, uh, anticipated some material, your material delivery issues. And so, um, we are working with the contractor and, and manufacturers to try to target a September completion date.
Mr. Joseph, you should be a politician, man.
You said September.
September, ma'am. We're, we're targeting September.
Okay, so it won't, we, so more than likely, it's probably gonna be more like January.
No, ma'am, no, ma'am, not at all.
I gotta get with Ms. Goree. I, I'm challenging you, and matter of fact, I got 20 bucks in my pocket, watching the January.
Well.
I mean, the only reason I'm saying is not necessarily, I think we have challenges with materials, but just what's going on in the world with, uh, everything that's happening in DC just makes me feel like, I, I just need to, we just need to know for sure, is, will it be open May of 2026? That's when we need it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Cooper?
Okay, so really just to ask, can you take us on another field trip so we can see the projects and where they're at?
Absolutely, whenever you guys are ready, I'd be glad to go for another tour.
To see what the convocation, okay, and Forest Park Middle.
Yeah. Ms. Baker?
Okay, I just want to give a shout out to you and your people for doing what you're doing because I was watching a lot of Facebook, and there's several people in this county who are taking pictures in front of that convocation center saying, "Look what we're doing." And it's everything for me to keep from making comments, so here I am making it in public. Y'all didn't do nothing.
I, I must stay clear from them, sir.
And, uh, Ms. Baker, Ms. Baker, since you brought that up, because I was gonna try to be nice, this is Holy Week, I believe. But since you brought it up, not only in front of that building, let's just talk about the Delta money as well because, uh, nobody has, nobody has given.
Folks, we gotta get back on the line here.
But that's all right, you can, you can wait. Uh, we need to give Dr. Smith his accolades because I saw that nice printout about what happened with Delta, and I saw everybody's picture on that form that, uh, had pretty much little or nothing to do with that. And I want to commend Dr. Smith and I believe Dr. Pitt and Dr. Wiley because I know they were, uh, they did a lot of work to make that happen. And I, I have fielded quite a few phone calls this week about that money, and so I just wanted to give them their due.
Very good, let's just make sure that our children benefit out of this, all right? Ms. Hill?
Um, I'll pass.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, other members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Smith, colleagues and community members. The Personnel Changes Report summarizes all personnel actions for the period of February 8th through March 13th, 2025. All human resources updates were provided to the Board of Education for your review. I am happy to answer any questions that you may have tonight.
Dr. Haney? All right, Ms. Hill?
Um, I just wanted to ask, I know, um, and this is a good thing, that we rehired 15 total people. Um, in that rehiring process, I just want to know, do we have information to know who left in good standing? Um, and do we take that into consideration when we're rehiring them?
Yes, we do have the information, and yes, um, the conditions of their separation are considered when determining their eligibility for rehire.
Thank you.
Dr. Haney?
So it could be a combination. So these rehires would have already started employment, and for the most part, for the non-225-day positions, the job fairs that we're currently hosting are ramping us up for school year 25, 26.
Dr. Goree?
I want to address, I believe the number is 390, is it 399 the number? I'm having trouble seeing because I broke my glasses, is that correct?
So as of March 17th, it was, yes.
Do you have a prediction as to how many people you think is that? What do you think the prediction would be for the teacher shortage?
So, um, as of today, we're at 389. But I also want to share with the board that we are, um, really highlighting those things that we can do, um, that are, um, more so in our control. So those factors that in, um, increase the quality of our teachers and continue to diversify the pipelines that we're utilizing to hire. So for example, we're strengthening the support that we're providing to teachers that are hired on emergency certifications such as waivers. We're ensuring that those who are, um, hired through the provisional certification route are getting additional support. We're strengthening our relationships with our collegiate partners, um, ensuring that those student teachers that we bring aboard are providing support and where the student teachers, um, articulated they are having concerns. For example, with passage of the assessments, um, the current assessment of GATES. Our district, the Professional Learning Department, um, was gracious enough to allow our district student teachers to participate in their preparation program, so the GATES prep program. So yes, the number is 389, but please know that we are really highlighting those things that we're doing to strengthen our pipelines and to increase retention.
All right, well, let me make this comment. To strengthen what we have now.
Yes, ma'am.
I hope some of your principals are watching this meeting. Let's see if we can allow principals to have a work-friendly environment and realize that there is a teacher shortage and that some of them have some very qualified teachers right now, but they are trying to run them off. And I'm about, I'm really infuriated with some of them, and I'm, I'm doing my best not to pick up the telephone and violate my, my role as a board member, but I do not appreciate certain individuals who are, who are doing things that they shouldn't be doing because we should be trying to keep each and every teacher that we have available instead of trying to run people off or not, uh, being accepting of certain things that, that bo, that really bothers me. I'm gonna say I was at an opera that was being held at, um, Clayton State on Saturday night, and one of your employees is, I, I had to give her, her, uh, accolade because she is in, she's on the provisional certificate, and she was watching her daughter perform in an opera, but she had an assignment that was due at 7:00 PM, and she had her computer there working with her. I'm not gonna call her name, but I want these principals to stop running off our people because I'm not gonna be sitting in this seat for a long time. And I'm, it looks like I'm gonna have to bring back the John Trotter. It's gonna be Jesse Trotter. Y'all gonna see me sitting in some of your buildings or else you're gonna see me standing before that podium because I do not like that. That's the end of my statement. I'm trying to, I said it was Holy Week. I don't think I'm adhering to what my script has said this morning.
Ms. Hill?
Um, yes, um, I, I just wanted clarification where it says the two new positions, um, and, and they're being recommended. Can you tell me, are these positions new and need to be funded? Or are these funded positions that we're just asking to fill?
Are you looking at the Position Control Report? So the first one is that.
729.
Um, it's the first one, a teaching and learning role?
Yes.
Okay, so that position is a established position, and it's being, um, held now at an interim assignment, I mean, acting assignment, not interim. And then the second one, um, is for our business services team. And I believe that position is new, but they may have, um, designated something, um, reuse the funds, your accounts payable technician position, the part-time role. So they collapsed, uh, an existing role and used it to, um, provide support to that team on a part-time basis.
Okay, but these, these positions are already funded?
Correct.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, I think we've completed our consent agenda. So you've been presented the con, to consent agenda. Is that light saying for the motion?
Uh, yes, I, isn't that what?
That's impressive, thank you, Ms. Goree. All right, so we have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda made by Ms. Goree, I need a second. Okay, you, you want to pull something? Go ahead.
No, I don't want to pull it, I'm trying to make a motion.
Ms. Goree, make your motion.
I'm trying to help you out. I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you very much, Ms. Goree. Do I have a second, Ms. Baker?
Second.
The motion has been made and properly seconded. Can I get a vote for the consent agenda? I have seven votes for the consent agenda. There have been two board members that couldn't hang out with us anymore, couldn't make it. The, the consent agenda is approved. You said three? Oh, it's about, well, I've just been, I've just been warned that it's, it's, it, it can go down some more. So let's get moving. Next on our agenda is, um, the business agenda, this is for action. We have, um, pondered on Policy Series F. And let me say this before she gets started. When we finish this vote, I'm gonna have to have a little mini speech, so please, people, embrace yourself. Um, do I have, we have two different versions of the Policy at Series F. We will start with series, with the Policy Series F, version one. Do I have a, Ms. Goree, you have a comment? Do I have a, Ms. Corrie, you have a comment? Okay, go ahead, speak about version two, Ms. Corrie. Got you. Got you. Thank you for that, Ms. Corrie.
Somebody tried to turn my mic off. I think I asked the chair to, to add that statement in there, but it didn't happen. So I'm making a, I, I'll just add, I'm gonna concede and have that placed in there.
Okay, so we're, we're going to now consider version number one of the policy series F. Do I have a motion for the, um, policy series F version one? I'm looking at, Ms. Cooper, Ms. Cooper?
First of all.
Yes, ma'am.
I made a motion, you can at least accept it.
Okay, so. All right, so folks, this is what we're gonna do in order to make everybody up here happy. We're gonna first consider version number two. We'll consider version number two, and if version number two passes, we won't have to go to version number one. All right, Ms. Corrie, I'm accepting motions for version number two. Do you have a motion for version number two?
And, and, uh, Mr. Chair, um.
You did, okay, fantastic, I have a motion for version.
I believe, Mr. Chair, there was a request to amend version number two.
She wants to, see, but before I get to the amendment, and I need you to help me out with this, Clem, why do I need to get to an amendment when I could vote on, on number one, and then we wouldn't have to bother with version, with, with amending anything, am I correct about that?
If, if you plan to, um, to vote on version number one first.
Right.
You wouldn't need to get to that amendment. Um, although I think it is appropriate to hear input, as Ms. Corrie just gave input on, you know, on all F policies and anything else. That, that was appropriate, but, um, if, you, you can only take one item in a row, and whichever one goes first, if it has a majority, there's no need to go to the second one, obviously.
I, uh, the re, I amended the second one because the first one has not been amended.
And, and I would just say, um, it can be, you can handle it a number of different ways, but it is appropriate to duly note that for when you get to number two, if you get to number two.
Fantastic. Ms. Corrie, you have anything else to say? Okay, Ms. Williams, are you, are you seconding Ms. Corrie's motion? Okay, folks, we are voting on version number two. Uh, it has been properly, um, moved, and we have it properly seconded. Can we get a vote on? With, with the amendment? Can we get a vote on version number two? Who am I missing?
Excuse me?
All right, let, let, what, what are we doing here? We got three votes, I got you, Ms. Corrie, I got you, Ms. Williams, I voted, Ms. Baker has voted. We're voting on version number two. Take your time, Dr. Haney. She's voted? Dr. Haney has voted, you've got your, um, your, your, uh, version two, um, Ms. Corrie. You have version two, it has passed, we don't need to do version number one.
And, Mr. Chair, just make sure for the minutes that we have that, yes, yes, sir, that the amendment, uh, two has amended, and there's no need to vote on number one.
All right, so there'll be an amendment for, all right, fantastic, next, the next, um, all right, the next policy that we have to consider is policy series J. Do I have a motion for Ms. Williams? Is that your old light? Okay. Do I have a motion for? Do I have a motion for policy series J? Ms. Baker? Ms. Cooper? Ms. Corrie?
Uh, you can't vote on this motion.
Ms. Corrie, you want to sit in this seat? No, go ahead, Ms. Corrie.
Uh, it, it, read what it says, it says second read.
No, this is the, this is the third read on that, am I correct?
We didn't have a, we didn't, we skipped a meeting.
Great, we'll table this, I think that completes the, no, we got a student disciplinary hearing officer. Do I have a motion on the student? We're pulling that into, we're not pulling it, we'll vote on it at the next board meeting, policy series J. Um, student, do I have a motion for the student disciplinary hearing officer?
I think, oh, I'm sorry, I, I can move to accept it, do you all need to? I can make a motion for us to accept it.
Fantastic, I have a motion for the.
Do you all need to explain anything, or is it?
Yeah, I think everybody's read the, the, um, packet, right? Thank you, all right, I have a motion for the student disciplinary hearing officer. I have a second, Ms. Hill?
I second the motion.
Fantastic, it has been moved and properly, um, seconded, can I get a vote? We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven affirmative votes. Madam Vice Chair, have we completed our agenda?
Yes, sir.
Fantastic, you guys have a, a fantastic night.